Need a motion to approve those. So.
I second that.
A little favor. Any comments? Should ask first. The vote. New business. Ryan, I'm gonna let you take one of them from here.
Alright, sounds good. So we had a workshop on LD two thousand and three, last time we met. We discussed the law itself.
You're not, not very audible.
Not very audible, how's that?
That's better.
There we go. We discussed the law itself of LD two thousand and three at our last meeting. And then we looked at the state's guidance and kinda had some discussion points during the workshop. And then we met with council last night to talk over what the process might look like. So right now, we have LD two thousand and three. If you look in your packets, just after the minutes, you'll see LD two thousand and three ordinance changes and questions. So just questions in general, like went through our land use ordinance. Kinda came up with these and what we wanna do. It seems like it's been a general consensus that while we're looking at LD two thousand and three, we wanna make sure that we also essentially look at other ordinances too, to see if we can just make more changes at once. So I guess the, the big topic for tonight is discussing LD two thousand and three, answering questions. And then past that, we're, we're gonna be deciding on how the planning board wants to approach these ordinance changes. So I kinda put, let's see. On part eleven, on the very last line of the sheet of paper, it says, ad hoc committee, subcommittee exclusively of planning board, and it raises a question. So essentially, we, we can keep this with the planning board, but we're gonna probably have to meet more often to go over these changes to the ordinances if we wanted to make them in time for the July first deadline. Or we can establish a subcommittee which is permanent, that would look at land use ordinances. Or you can establish an ad hoc committee which is more temporary. The benefit of the ad hoc is it can be this and then done, we're not always alternating, alter, altering our land use ordinance for no reason. But also, they can meet more often, easier, because it's, it doesn't have to be public. You can kinda work around the schedules and most people meet as often as they want to type of thing. So it's really up to the planning board and how they want to approach, approach this. Typically with a committee, it would be, you know, there'd still be some from the planning board on it. One or two members, and then you might pull some council and you could pull a community member, maybe staff, stuff like that. So that's ultimately why this is on new business, is ultimately deciding, well, general discussion on the, on the topic, but also deciding how it wants to be approached over the next five or six months.
Was it going to stay? I don't know how much other work we have to do. I don't know how much other work we have to do, but my initial thought is that we discuss this at every meeting. I've been on enough committees to know that you get burnout if you have committees and subcommittees and panels and all that. And I don't like spending enough time here to keep it for once a month. And dig into it on our, on our own. And of course, we have to, I don't see Eric's here, but you know, at some point, somebody's, there's gonna be a lot of public interest.
Ryan.
What's that?
You're, you're not on it, I don't think.
Oh, no, that's just, that's just a screen acknowledging that we're streaming.
You have to hit God it for it to be screening. There you go.
Okay. In case anybody's listening, I'm going to get after it on Wednesday of the month. As opposed to putting another meeting on my schedule. I, I just noticed you can appoint subcommittees forever. I don't know. It's a matter of time. What do you ladies think?
I agree with you.
Yeah, I also agree. I think as long as we have a focused agenda with the meetings, I think that would be ample time.
Do you, are you alright with having an extra meeting here and then getting this done in time? Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, we might have to. Yep. We did that with the solar when we met. You know, what, two or three times? Extra meetings and get it in and out.
Great. Yeah, so we, we have that part. So I guess the next part is consultation. Is there anything that you guys would like me to do in terms of having a consultant for this? MMA, AVCOG, or any other avenue, anything specific? For the legal parts, or do we bring that in later?
Well, I think part of it is we need to, at a minimum, make sure that our interpretation, or maybe what you've shared with us so far, is, is accurate and concise, right? So that would be my thought, is we at least wanna make sure that we've read the, the regs correctly. And then as we develop the ordinances or make changes to the ordinances, making sure that it still complies with, you know, what we have so far. And make sure it doesn't contradict any of the changes to it.
Sure. Yeah, I guess Ryan, my approach to tackle this whole thing would be to go through our ordinance, existing ordinances, and highlight what doesn't comply. And then look at what changes need to occur after that. That doesn't seem like all that big of a bear.
Well, the question that I would have to that is that we paid an outside company to be able to review our ordinances, right? Review it all. And I think one of the things, like, I guess I'd wanna understand, like, where that stands at this point, where that work stands. Is it complete? If so, you know, is there a chance that we can take a look at it? Because I'm assuming they're probably waiting on us if the work is complete for us to be able to give the okay of what we want changed. And I'm assuming at a minimum, there's a kind of redundancy that we can automatically eliminate out of there. And then kind of look at it using that lens versus us looking at something that we're gonna change it anyway.
Yeah, so we're right with that. It's, GIMCO is the company we hired to look at our ordinances, get it all up to date. They have completed their analysis, and so now, staff right now is looking through that analysis and trying to sift through it. There was over two hundred items. And I believe we're about one hundred fifty through. So I'm hoping the next meeting or two will have something to promote on the planning board and council. It's just general cleanup for now, and I have spoken to town manager about potentially hiring them to help us with this, if that's within their scope. As part of the services are making sure that none of the statutes in there change and stuff like that. Just basically an ongoing check of it. So that could be another avenue.
Which they've gotta have some kind of templated thing started, right, for this reg that's coming down the little pipeline?
I haven't seen anything, but.
We ask them, because I mean, that's how you help eliminate some of the work that we have to do to start, and then we can modify as needed. And maybe at that point, if they've got a template, they can probably even point out where we can kind of make variations.
Sure.
What do you think about that?
Yeah, it makes sense. Yeah, identify what doesn't comply and then look for corrections.
Very good. Until the state, until the state has all of their stuff in one bag, they really wouldn't be able to tell us, because they are like us, they're shooting at the wind, not quite sure, you know, what it is. Just because there are things that they're telling us right now, as we learn with the marijuana and with the solar, they can turn around and change, unfortunately.
Well, that company would have to comply with those changes as well, right? So like, I know in my business, when we work on it, we start the process of doing the work for regulatory changes. And then if things shift or get modified as a, as a result, then we just work to, to ship whatever the limits are, yeah.
I would think so. My concern with that, now that we have the council on coming out, is how much they're going to charge us if they don't have a finalized law? And they're trying to roll with the law. And the law changes, and they have to do it again and again and again.
The state wants us to comply by July first. Isn't it on them for the rulemaking? I thought this is a finalized law.
That's the law, but it is finalized, but the rulemaking and the what ifs are not finalized.
And I think the interpretations of this, I don't.
Essentially, yeah.
So the state just said, yeah.
Correct. And then the state's working on it, rulemaking right now as we speak, the changes.
And if something comes out of the rulemaking, the conflicts with the law, then they could go with they, they have in the past gone in and just amended their law to meet the ruling.
Having this discussion, you're making it sound like we're doing this too early.
I think we'll hit it in stride.
You can do the preliminary work to start, and then modify as you need to.
It's better to start now and be a little ahead than like we were with the marijuana and the solar and get rolled over.
I also wanna ask, I think we have something from the public too, so are we gonna open public comments now or later, or kinda mix it in?
Yeah, while we do that.
Hi, my name is Michael Morning. I used to live in McInnes Falls and is that microphone on? Sorry, is there a green light? Hi, my name is Mike Marine. I used to live in McInnes Falls. And I'm sorry, now I'm old, but I have a couple properties over here in McInnes Falls. And I lived on sixty seven Brown Road for from two thousand nine to two thousand eighteen or so. And I had an in-law apartment. So I had to live there. And now I've rented the upstairs of that. And now they tell me I need to have a, it's a two unit, it's only a four bedroom house. So it's always been a two unit. And they say I don't have enough land. I have two acres. I mean, I have an acre and a quarter. But then you can have, and I have two hundred feet of road frontage. Tell me that I need three hundred feet and like two acres, or two and a half acres.
That's because you're sound and trying to sell it, right? Or you're just trying to frank it?
Well, I've been in that, because I moved out four years ago. I have a bunch of other properties in other places. And they're telling me that I had to put my address back there, back in here. Or, you know, probably have to rent it, probably as a four bedroom house. Rather than, or just one unit and just leave the other unit taken. Which I don't wanna do, because my taxes, you know, over three thousand dollars, yeah, I improved the property. There was a three thousand dollar property, and I bought it, and it's worth eight hundred thousand dollars now. So.
Is that AD, is that because the ADU?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to sell the property. It's not a two unit. This is the way the, the way it states, because I have, like I said, two hundred feet of road frontage. And I have almost an acre and a half, and it's still not.
These rules that we're trying to work on now would address that. Yeah. So you would be able to do that.
Yeah, that's my concern, because I've been, like I said, I lived there for the first, whatever, ten years or so. Myself, and I wanted to move out, so.
Has he been in your mind?
Yes. I've talked to him. I suggested that he come.
Is that the ADU ordinance, because he has to, it has to be owner occupied, and that's why?
Part and parts.
And the two hundred per frontage.
So you need two hundred fifty feet of road frontage. And then in order to have a multi-family, you have to have fifty more feet per unit. So right now, with his parcel, you know, you can't have a two unit there because of our road frontage requirements. So as a part of looking through LD two thousand and three and the other ordinance changes, I think essentially what he's advocating for is to be able to have two hundred feet of road frontage for a two unit with no extra road frontage requirement.
Which LD two thousand and three would, how can do that?
It would help them, but he still needs fifty feet more road frontage under our ordinances.
For a single family home, or an attached unit? Yeah, it's the zone.
It's for a two unit. So for an ADU, he would be fine as is with the proper permitting. But you have to owner occupy an ADU according to our ordinance. So the issue we're having, and he doesn't live there, but it was never permitted to be converted to an ADU or a two unit. So essentially, it's a illegal use right now. And we're trying to work together to either come up with more land or frontage or something to make it legal. So in order, one of the things that could help is either buy neighbors' land or adjusting our road frontage requirements. So when we kinda discovered this a couple of weeks ago, maybe a week and a half ago, Mike here came to my office and we had a discussion, and I said, you know, we're looking over the ordinances. If you wanna advocate for something, you're welcome to come. So that's why he's here tonight.
I understand it's at least six, six months out.
Yeah.
Or more.
Or more.
Yeah, so this is the start of the process.
Yeah. That's right, game.
Ryan, was the, the second unit ever legally permitted by the code, any codes officer?
No, that's the issue we're running into.
So technically, on our books, it's seen as a, a family, a single family resident.
Correct, yes.
Did you wanna?
Yeah. Hey, my name is Matt Rossola. I'm also a realtor. I live in McInnes Falls. You know, I do appreciate you guys studying planning do out here. Never really been to anywhere meeting before. So this really isn't a, really a, a question or a concern that I have with anyone. I just wanna state that, you know, as a realtor, I see that we have such a shortage of, you know, housing. And to try to, I think we should try to get ahead of, you know, what you guys are doing. To maybe try to change the ordinances to make it more make it easier for people that want to get, to build, you know, multi-owners on their property. Or to make, you know, the in-law apartments for, for people that have existing properties around the home. Well, I've seen a lot of, you know, a lot of older people are selling their houses, they're moving their family. And then you gotta kinda think, you know, if they, if they do get permitted, you want units. What are they gonna do after the people, you know, move on? Because you can't sell it as a, as a multi-unit. So if you don't have the, the existing, you know, structure for road frontage or the other requirements to be a legal multi-unit, I think that moving forward, you know, like you guys are doing, we should continue to try to loosen up regulations to make it a little bit easier for people to have the ability to, to have, you know, the multi-unit, to get the, you know, to rent the apartment above their garage. To help, you know, offset the, the cost of mortgages already now. And that's probably gonna say it.
Are you, just a quick question, are you finding, like, things that you're hearing that it's a road frontage issue more than anything as far as why people are having this problem being able to do that? Since we did loosen our ADU requirements.
Yeah, and to be completely transparent, I am his realtor.
Okay.
He might not bother. Just for him to see that, you know, and then, you know, I guess I'm, I don't, I don't go through the, the order to, you know, to really know exactly what the details are that people are coming across or troubles. But I do, now moving forward, you know, it's a question I get a lot from, from clients. You know, am I able to put, you know, an in-law apartment in here? Am I able to make it a multi-unit? It's just, it's stuff I hear a lot that, you know, if, if it is a tight thing right now, you know, if we can move forward to loosening up those regulations to make it easier for people. Like I said, it seems like that's what you guys are paying, who it is, but I just wanted to let you guys know, it's, it's how I feel as a, you know, number of the good.
Was it that way when you bought it?
Yeah, no, no, it wasn't.
So you modified it without going to the codes officer to find out if you could?
Well, it was another golden enforcement officer. And I did have septic system. It was for, it was, is for a two unit, was put in, that was approved. The plumbing wasn't approved, my plumbing didn't. Well, basically, the house was falling in the ground. There was no septic when I bought it. So I went to the town or whatever, and he came out and called, I moved there, he moved the house back. We had put a septic in, I said, I wanna do it two, two unit or in-law apartment. And he said, well, you should do it in-law apartment. That's what his, his advice was to me doing that. I said, okay. And so then he gave me the permit for the the septic system behind that. But the plumbing was not, kind of a fault. Because we moved the house back, like, one feet. And
Do you remember what you do?
But basically, the bathrooms and all, all the stuff, the plumbing wasn't moved during, we just lifted the house up.
Do you remember what year that was?
Two thousand and nine. I lived there since two thousand and nine. The house was owned by a Vietnam vet, and the house was falling in the ground, I bought it at auction. As is where, as nobody wanted to touch the place because it was not built right, you know, it was falling in the ground. It was basically something around like two feet. So, you know, it's, you know, it's three thousand square foot house. So what are you gonna do with it? I figured, well, I can live in it and rent one of the apartments. So that's how that all come about, basically.
When, when did you convert it to a two family?
Two thousand nine, soon as I bought it. We put a septic in.
So the two family use didn't come into play, it looks like, until?
Yeah, he had, it was a three bedroom. I think he had, it was a I don't know. It wasn't totally finished upstairs. He was letting his kids stay up there, but there was a bathroom upstairs and he had bedrooms upstairs for his kids to live in.
Well, we have been great.
It was a four bedroom house. It was a four bedroom, it was a four bedroom house.
Existing part of January first, two thousand eleven, must have been three quarters.
What it was, it was a non-conforming, single family use. Meaning it didn't have enough requirements, but as a single family, it was still permitted. It was converted to a two unit.
And you're saying it was converted in two thousand and nine, but the two family use didn't even come into effect until two thousand eleven?
But you still need two hundred fifty feet of road frontage. So if you have a non-conforming lot, you can't do a change of use like that.
And people would have been required to go to the codes officer and pull a permit. And then when the codes officer saw that it was non-conforming, he would have had to file an appeals with the appeals board to see if they would allow it. It appears he did not do that.
You know, on top of that, the, the square footage of the lot is on the acreage, because we require more acreage.
Do you remember who would have been the code? Was it Nicholas?
I believe it was Nicholas at the time.
Two thousand and nine was probably.
Ryan thinks it was Nick. Nick's pretty tough.
Yeah.
Nick.
After Nick, they were kind of loosey-goosey.
Yeah, it was, it was probably Nick.
So are you saying that a single use would still wouldn't have met the requirements back in two thousand and nine?
Yeah, it would not have met the requirements for a two unit then either, because of the land area, it doesn't have acreage. Based on our ordinances. So for example, if you had a single family in town that had fifty feet of road frontage, let's say, and you wanted to convert it to a legal two unit, you couldn't do that under our ordinances, because you need two hundred feet of road frontage.
Yeah, under our current ordinance.
Right.
She's saying two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine, there was no two family use definition. So technically.
It would have been illegal.
But you can't.
It would have been fine, because that was created until two thousand and eleven. So I'm trying, I guess I'm not following.
Yeah, you still can't do a change of use on a non-conforming lot. Meaning if there's a single family there, we're not gonna tell you to move out of your single family, because it existed before the ordinances. Anything existing after our land use ordinance went to effect in nineteen ninety-five, I believe, or ninety-six is subject to our land use ordinance. So then, you know, the law's no longer acceptable to have a change of use.
I'll think, I'll think so a lot.
It's a little over eight grand, four.
One point four seven.
One point four seven.
How much frontage?
Two hundred. Next, there's two hundred, that's what it is.
I saw it, and it was gonna be two acres, that was the problem.
Yeah, I think it's one point eight acres for one unit, and then you need fifty percent more for the two unit. Three of them need, yeah, so like two point seven acre. You need about double, what you, almost double what you have right now, in order to do two unit there. So that's just something that, again, as our land use ordinances are written and as they were at that time, they're kind of playing. You do have a land, however, to make an accessory dwelling unit. But the issue with permitting after the fact now is that it's not owner occupied. So I can't permit an ADU.
So if we change the ordinance to make it so that it wasn't owner occupied?
And then.
And create and indicate it's an ADU, because technically it would fall under an ADU.
Yeah, so with, with that, we would kind of blur the lines between the two unit and ADU at that point. And I think the ADU ordinance was made specifically for people that have family that live there, or have an Airbnb in the yard, which is what it mostly of the time is. But if you wanted to make that change, you very well could, from my standpoint, because I don't know if they, they, they will keep us from doing that.
We didn't change, we didn't remove the two family?
We just, we just redefined it.
I think two families always been allowed in the rural zone, as far as I understand.
No, it wasn't.
Wasn't?
No.
You know when that was added?
What's that?
You know when that was added?
Um.
Subcommittee.
Right.
Okay. Because our law says that it's been one.
All right, where do we go from here then? So we don't just red water.
Yeah, so are we gonna make these workshops as we continue to meet about the subject? Or is it gonna be an open prison site? And attack them?
I would think we do it as a workshop.
We can, okay, so the plan is to not establish any sort of committee. We're gonna do it with the planning board for workshops, either meeting following planning board meetings and or special meetings.
Yeah, we don't have to follow the rules as much for workshops.
Sure.
You did camp though.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we'll, Friday.
Okay. Yeah, so essentially, from there is I'll try to get some guidance on some legal parts. Right now, you have a list of questions in front of you, and I welcome anyone to bring any other questions for this, or any other changes that would be made. But because we're also considering land use changes in general, I mean, I guess we also welcome those to come here too, on what they would, each person would recommend changing while we're at this, whether it be dimensional requirements or land uses.
I agree.
That ain't directly related to LD two thousand and three.
Yeah, I mean, these two specifically, we talked, we even talked about the road frontage last night, right? So, I mean, if, if we could just even start considering, like, having a conversation around these two specific things, the ADU, because we already know we need to change the ADU, it has to be, what, minimum size of one hundred and ninety square feet? So that means to change in our ordinance. So we know we can quickly do that. And then if we could have conversation, I don't know what your thought there, but to have conversation about these other two already brought up. Or if there's a different approach, you wanna take that one out?
That sounds about right. I think it's about establishing a list of changes between.
And we have backseers in front of us right now, so I feel like.
So what I'd like to see, Ryan, see if that would be agreeing on, is a document highlighting what potential jurisdictions are out of compliance with this. At the next meeting, then we can start working, we can get that out early, so we can begin reviewing it and not waste of the month time. Well.
Uh, Mr. Smith, have you suggested to them that they file a appeal with the Board of Appeals? To see if the Board of Appeals would give them a?
The Board of Appeals is another route. That, that can be taken. The Board of Appeals has specific criteria they have to abide by. And if you don't meet all parts of that criteria, they have to say no. So we have in our land use ordinance the details on that, on the, the parts you would have to meet for that. So the Board of Appeals could be a route to go, which is legally by ordinance, it's not allowed, but yeah, it's another way. But there is a fee to go for the Board of Appeals, I'd have to look it up. And then from there, it's your application and they'll, they'll hear you. So. So there we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question about something that came up last night. We have, and as you can remember, these figures, we have low income housing.
Yes.
And affordable housing. Did that come up? You're talking about how we measure what's you remember that above and below the median income? Could you go over that one more time?
Yeah, so when you look at, let's see, we're gonna go to the actual law here, it's like this. Go to, let's see. Page two. Section three A and three B will give you that answer. So for rental housing. Uh section three A and three B will give you that answer, so for rental housing. Uh affordable means eighty percent of the local area median income. Uh has to be able to afford it, which means that the total cost of housing is thirty percent or less of their income.
Very good.
And then for own housing, it should be condos um or single family homes, that's a hundred twenty percent of the median income.
I kind of worry, and thank you for pointing that, I kind of worry that some people will confuse affordable with low income. And as a kind of a, a low income, we want that, but affordable, there's a distinction, isn't there? Can you remind?
Um I I would have to look at legal definitions of that, to see if there's legal definitions.
Because it looks like. For own housing. At or below one hundred and twenty percent of the local area median income at the time of initial occupancy, doesn't sound like low income housing.
Yeah, it's.
A lot of people could afford.
It's a more rare form of affordable housing.
Okay, I just wanted to make it clear that we don't use affordable housing and low income housing interchangeably.
And that's legally what we're talking about here is affordable, and I do know what you're saying.
Yeah.
I actually do think that low income is actually kind of bunched together with that, and then you have subsidized over here.
Of course.
Yeah, so you have, you have your four million subsidized.
Okay.
So that would be more like a section eight. Yeah.
It's it's new to me, I want to make sure that we don't get them confused.
Yeah.
Subdivized, and then there's affordable. Through separate categories.
Different categories.
Thank you.
It doesn't mean that someone in an affordable housing unit can't get section eight voucher.
Understood. Okay.
With this, the only other question I have is, is the town required to, like, review, monitor, and regulate? These, these rental properties or whatever to make sure that they're meeting that requirement?
So our responsibility is one site plan review, because they're not exempt from subdivision, so if we go forward this forward. Before we can approve the developments, they have to prove that they have a thirty year restrictive covenant in their deed. Defining at least half the units to affordable housing levels. Which means that rent can go up over time as the median income goes up. Uh so.
So someone on social security, for example, as their income increases, their rent can also increase.
It would be not the individuals, it would be the median of our area. Yes, of our specific. County, it would be in the county counties.
Correct.
Median income.
And while they say thirty years, we are required to do at least the minimum, if you chose. You could add fifty, maybe seventy five, whatever you want, to the requirement to make sure it remains. Affordable housing. How will this affect subdivisions? That have what houses with acreage?
Subdivision is a housing acreage. If there's a restrictive covenant in those deeds, they won't be able to go by L D two thousand and three. So subdivision exists, and it has rules against multi-family housing or more than one house on parcel within. L D two thousand and three does not override that.
But if the deeds don't say that?
When the deeds don't say that, then yeah, people can use L D two thousand and three, including the accessory dwelling unit in their neighborhood.
So do they have to file a new subdivision plan then?
That would be another site plan review with us. Um if they are doing a large divide of more than two, two parcels of land. Yeah, we would have to see that again, but if it's just one divide and there's nothing in the deed stating that it can't be divided. Then they are able to divide at least once without subdivision review, however, I believe our ordinance is, does it state that? Um they have to put it in the deed that it can no longer be divided. For some reason, that's coming to my mind, but I don't have my book in front of me.
So in essence, the, like, would very know, could, if it's not in their covenants in their deeds, we could actually have that. Double in size. Under L D two zero zero three, and there's nothing we can do about it?
As long as they have the minimum lot footage uh correct, as long as there's nothing in their deeds that states they can't. Uh what we run into there though is. Primary dwellings in the dead end road. So our dead end road ordinance is, at least only allows for fourteen units or dead end road, or fourteen parcels, so. Um further subdividing on dead end road right now, if you already have that threshold, it's not possible, there are further ordinances.
And they can't make us remove that?
That I don't know, that'd be for lawyers. The question was, um can they, can essentially someone challenge that or make us remove that rule, and the answer is I don't know. Idea for a lawyer to decide, but I've seen nothing about anything like that in L D two thousand and three.
Would not make sense if they would, because that's kind of a safety thing, right?
And and that's the, I think that's it right there, it's more about the spirit of it. We're putting in regulations specifically for the purpose of not meeting housing goals. That's actually spelled out in L D two thousand and three that we can't do that. So part of what we're doing here over the next few months is not trying to set ordinances to prevent housing. Because that's against the spirit of the law, and same with our comprehensive plan, we can't set that against the spirit of L D two thousand and three. Uh but I think for the reason of public safety is, it's a very strong reason. Um I also know that other communities who have dead road ordinances also, some don't, but a lot do for that same reason.
All right, so for the next meeting, this review, what we're gonna do, you're gonna have a. List of uh. Areas and and ordinances don't apply. And then we'll take it from there.
And so, sorry, can I ask a clarifying question, if I'm not sure about something, you just want me to also bring that up too? Maybe I'll highlight that in a different color.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll start working on one by one.
Do you, are you looking for, like, commentary from us on these questions that you have for us, far as this meeting is concerned?
If this meeting, next meeting, whatever you'd like to do, we kind of opened it up to be a whole L D two thousand and three and ordinance change conversation. Or if there's any other ordinances that anyone want me to take a look into. Um I was already planning on going through some of our general residential zones, downtown business. Zone, which is more in the property ability area, and trying to see if I can find. Some sort of database that states how much acreage and how much road frontage each parcel has, and what the uses on that parcel. Which would, again, we don't. We got a huge, super big, but it would still be a lot of labor, but hopefully assessing office is something like that.
It would be really great if we had that all electronically.
And same with what parcels are open, what parcels are divisible, or or. I feel like that could really help us.
The number of blocks are in.
Yeah, that could really help us.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So is there any more to do this night? I just, I just wanted something to run up last night. Something I was behind on. That uh solar array on Lewis Road is underway, is that correct?
Um yeah, I can include that in my C E O updates, I'd like.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
What about the other ones that we have approved?
We want to move on to.
I'm sorry.
C E O update, sorry, I just want to make it official.
Yes.
All right, yeah, it seems like we're, we've dried that conversation out, at least for tonight, and then I have some direction here, and I'll start gathering some items. Um so with C E O updates, uh solar arrays, um I believe one expired. Um one I have not heard from since I started, um and then the other one on Lewis Road that we just did an adjustment for. Um last I heard, the plan is to start this winter and be operating by spring, or really summer, be fully operated.
Now, the expired one, they have a year to still reapply or?
I I believe, the way it's written, um our latest change has stated two years from approval, and they are past two years from approval, so.
So it's dead?
It would be, they would have to completely reapply.
You say couldn't because they're already known.
They're in a rural zone. They would have restricted that, so.
That's, that's above my pay grade. I'll say, that's, that's for uh people with more dance degrees to decide in the legal realm.
Understood.
Yeah, but from my standpoint, though.
I think you're out of spot, Paul, you said something about they had a year, so I'm wondering where you.
Um when we were doing the adjustments to all of that stuff, and Alan was still here. Alan said that they had up to eleven months and thirty days. From the expiration to come in and submit for a extension. If they hadn't already done it, hadn't already gotten the two extensions.
Yeah, so the way the ordinance is written, and the way we changed it, it was written that you have one year to get started or make substantial progress. Um past that, we made a retroactive ordinance to allow two years. Um something I could see an argument based off of is abandoned use. So let's say a property burns down and it's nonconforming. Um essentially, they would have one year to come to me, or I can grant two one-year extensions. For them to still be able to build that same use on that parcel. Okay, so that that'd be three years, so that might be a reference point for this, but again, I'm not quite sure how that works.
That's what Alan had told me that that they had, once, once the two years expired, they had. Up until that, oh, you know. Midnight hour of the thirtieth of whatever the day is, for a year out to come and ask for an extension.
Yeah, I don't see how that fits with what Ryan just said. And Ryan's talking about burned down house versus some project that hasn't been started.
I believe the, the L U, the land use ordinance states that, yeah, it's an existing structure, existing use. Um by my interpretation of it.
I think what Mr. Plummer, well, the reason he said what he said then, and I don't know if he still would say it, is is that. Because of the CMP process taking so long.
Yeah.
That he felt that if they could legitimately say, well, it's because I'm still waiting on. That approval aspect, that they couldn't do anything until they got that approval.
Seems like the attorney didn't tell you that, though.
I would think so too, and I was wondering, after I asked that question last night. I can't seem to find anything, I just tried looking to see if there's a database, there must be a database somewhere. Where we could see which of these projects in the state of Maine have made it through the CMP approval and acceptance.
I think there is, I know I dug into it when we were looking at the solar stuff, but I mean, you were, you have to dig for it, but there is a database where you can see that.
Well, the one that I had found, when I went to it, it came up, uh four oh four unfound page. Uh now, so. And I was too tired to go beyond that.
Well, that South Main Street project may not be related to CMP though, because there are too many. Other issues that was. Getting involved in the project. Wasn't a lot of cooperation from the landlords.
Yeah, so that's, was there another part someone wanted me to cover during my updates? That I'm forgetting about.
What about the other one? The one that's in the residential.
Would be North Street.
Yeah, North Street, I haven't heard it work, um I don't believe it's, it's expired, I don't believe so, but I would have to double check that. Last night I checked, it wasn't expired, but that was probably a couple of months ago. But again, nothing, nothing heard, nothing seen, and that's, really, I was at a, a planning board meeting of a. Um a city nearby, and they, they have approved probably five of these, they haven't seen the single one go up either.
Which is common, like, when I was doing the research, it's years before it started, so in fact, that was in its greatest. Pushing along, and I'm sure there's.
Yeah, so I think that covers solar. Um I want to give an update on Nine North Main Street, which is the, we had building combination hearing last month at council. Um which was December fifth. That's a nine-unit apartment building, um can, will make two of the units uninhabitable and condemned. Um and then there are still structural concerns, so they have. Basically, part of the order was they have to get engineers work over the building to make sure that those structural concerns have designed fixes that are gonna. The pole, um so right now, that's scheduled for January seventeenth, and we go from there. Ultimately, they have ninety days to have their report back with fixes um already drawn up, or the engineer to sign on, as is.
And where did you say this was?
This was at Nine North Main Street.
Is that on the corner?
Part on the corner of Water Street. Um so, yeah, I had gotten a call from a couple of tenants, and found black mold, um sagging floors. Uh foundation blown apart and cracked, uh one of the walls shakes, if you push on it, one of the low bearing exterior walls. So. Yes, correct, so right now, we're working through that, but they are complying um so far with the council order. Um but that's been going on for quite a while, um basically, that's coenforcement answer I could give. I couldn't do anything legal, but I could give citation, and I, I went all the way through my citation schedule with it and brought it to council. So I just updated them on that last night too, so um that's where that's at. I am running into a couple more um illegal or uninhabitable apartments, so. Um. Two, I had one, it was a fire call, um that it turns out that one of the downstairs unit, the fire department called me down. And it was just a, it was a boiler that was smoking, so it was just, you know, it was all safe, and. I walked through all the units, and it was just trash everywhere, feces, um tubs full of black water, type of stuff, really bad. Um so I had to make that uninhabitable, and then, uh but I gave the, them seven days to get their stuff out. Um which was more than enough than they needed. And then had another one on the same street, that was an illegal three unit, um that I'm working on right now.
Illegal what?
Illegal three unit, someone had an illegal third unit. Um the danger in that is unpermitted work, not seen, not inspected, and then also, when we go to three units, you have that as a equal system. Um so one of the two units you don't have to right now, um but that might change in the next five or ten years. Um yeah, so anyways, I'm working on that right now, working with the property owners. Um been seeing, and a lot of this stuff comes up, um like an appraiser calls me or something to make sure. Um stuff like that, people doing their due diligence. Um I had a, another junkyard complaint, seen quite a few uh junkyards, um and. Got some requests for action, so we'll be taking those actions, but right now, it's going on Riverside Drive, we're gonna start chasing, um that's been an issue. Um. Still seeing all the campers around town, dealing with those, but we resolved a couple of those. Um L D two thousand and three, which is, I gave the council an update, and planning board was also there. Um and we decided what we're going for with that tonight. Um I have no site plan reviews planned, nothing submitted. I thought they were gonna see it back at their last cannabis license, but we ran into some ordinance issues with lot size, road frontage, all of that sort of stuff. Um the parcel also had a single family dwelling, which you can't have for a draw order, so we're working on. Uh basically creating a road up to the standards, and then sectioning off the back part of the parcel to meet the dimensional standards off the road. So it's gonna be a little makeshift, but we're gonna try to make it work, so I'm waiting to hear back about the survey for the, any legal split of that parcel. Um so once we have that, um if they get that, then we will see another cannabis application. Um but as of now, I I know of nothing else, um in terms of. Um cannabis, and then I did have some inquiries about building a four unit building. Um and so we'll see it, where where that goes to, but that's another one that might run the road frontage issues. Because a four unit, you, this zone is two hundred feet of road frontage, and you need fifty feet more per unit, so they would need. Three hundred fifty feet of road frontage. It's a lot, so.
How big is the lot, Ryan?
Oh. Acreage wise, I'd have to check. Blood zone might be an empty too, getting the required amount of land, because our ordinance does state that we can't use acreage that's in the spectrum to count towards. Like usable land, um so we'll see how all this planning turns out with that one, see if we can get it. But that would be another one that comes to planning board, that is conditional use.
I have a stupid question, but.
Sure.
Where does this road frontage even come from, like, what's the thought behind that?
Essentially to limit. Limit about development and or um keep uniformity, so for example. So for example, like in the rural zone, this four unit is not in the rural zone that I'm talking about, but because it's not allowed in the rural zone. Well, let's say in the rural zone, you know, you want stuff to be spread out, right, so you have a two hundred fifty feet road frontage requirement, whereas in downtown business, I believe it's a hundred feet. Yeah, um so you know, I guess that's where it stems from. Um there are communities right now just getting rid of road frontage requirements, um and everywhere except for rural, and I'm I'm seeing that more and more. Um not surrounding areas, stuff like that, so we're just going down the fifty, I think one just added that twenty-four feet.
I have a two unit, it's in Poland, excuse me, I have a two unit in Poland. That I built, it was a hundred and seventy year old house, it's a passage. Uh Poland, and it has forty feet of road frontage, and they let me put a two unit, and second story on the building, this is. Passage, and so it took the roof off and went. Up another five feet, because I posted beam off that. And put a roof on it, and now they they turned it into a two unit property and now it's only got forty feet of road frontage.
Yeah, a lot of the times, it's unbelievable.
They don't have septic over there, so I had to put in the drivable septic system. So you drive in, if it just wasn't a lean. For the two unit.
Yeah.
So when they're trying to limit road frontage downtown. I'm gonna stick later, when my wife says I don't need to. When they're trying to limit road frontage downtown, that's a way of building downtown. And I'm trying to understand the the philosophy behind all the limiting it downtown. And what what is the purpose behind that?
Yeah, I I think, uh right now, I think you'd have a very hard time of finding a splitable parcel anywhere in our downtown business zone.
Right.
Where you can get a hundred feet and plus the dimensional requirements in terms of land. Um essentially, it's meant to prevent buildings being really close together. Kind of reach out the window and touch your neighbor type of stuff. Um so if you, if you have a uh five foot step back from the side and a minimum of a hundred feet of road frontage, you know, you're gonna have open space.
Right.
Um instead of something like a city where it's stacked on top of each other.
Yeah.
Um that's a thought process, and I'm not saying, I'm just trying to be objective here, you know, trying to just give you the information.
Okay, I'm I'm starting to understand it, I mean, I don't know much about frontage.
And I, I'm sorry if my answers aren't.
No, that's alright.
Point, but I guess yours are on to something, it seems like with road frontage insurance.
Just like an aesthetic, like how the town looks.
Right, and I I don't know, that's what puzzles me, I mean, is there anything in the planning board documents or whatever we said that mentions what you just said, Shannon? How does the town look? So I mean, is that spelled out in any ordinance?
I think part of it would also be safety, like you had mentioned, so like. If one business catches on fire or one unit catches on fire and the building's that close, the flames, depending on the weather, would. Then spread that. Because I mean, businesses are running on propane tanks and oil tanks and.
A hundred percent correct on that.
Yeah, and it's also, there there are codes commercially, um we can point to that. Some businesses, if they're so close to a road or another business, they have more fire safety, but it still doesn't prevent. Something catching on fire, um another thing you can talk about is like environmental impact. That is, uh you know, if you, if every single square foot of downtown is either asphalt or building, you know, um environmental impact can be concerned. Um I think that's more for the rural zones especially.
I guess what I'm getting at, since I'm. Still relatively, we haven't had that many meetings since I started, is I remember Alan saying, there are certain things you can't do. There are certain things people can do, no matter how they look. And I remember when Jim DePalma was the chairman of this board many years ago, I was saying, why did they put that car wash? When they put it, I think it was ugly, and he said, we can't do anything about that. The car wash is not a pretty building, you know what I mean, in front of the future.
Really well.
And 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 Alan said, dude, that's not, that you can't apply that, if they want to put in an ugly car wash, they can. What I'm asking is what control do we have over what Shannon called aesthetics? Doesn't sound like much according to what Jim told me.
Well, zones, I mean, you can limit based off of like your zones and what can be allowed in the zones, but that's like downtown business, isn't that so?
Essentially, the planning board's here to make sure that these new developments um are following the ordinances, yeah, dimensionally and otherwise.
But it doesn't sound like the ordinances are focusing on how things look.
Well, it depends on what it is, like with the solar. Um solar, our latest solar thing, we made sure that we covered. Aesthetics so that they were isolated.
That makes sense, yeah. Alright. Anything else?
So the goal for our next meeting will be to take what Ryan brings to us as far as modifications that need to be made for existing ordinances. Right, and then um find out if there is completed stuff from that uh company. That's looking at our ordinances for L B two thousand and three.
Yeah.
We'll do it the same way you come, one by one.
And are you gonna do another meeting between now and the next meeting in next month, or you just gonna wait till next month?
It's the pleasure of the boy.
Hopefully, Ryan, turn that around.
Um in terms of the parts in my control, highlighting the landing ordinance, I can turn that around in two weeks, showing to have a meeting between now and the next one. Um the list of parcels and the dimensions will depend on the resources available, I might be waiting on others or having extensive amount of work towards that. It depends on who else in the office I can borrow, but we'll see, and then uh looking at you. Um and then, uh I guess, the other part of it is trying to see if this company can help us with this or who can. Um on the legal side of it, um that's kind of what I'm taking away from this.
So it sounds like you'll have something that we can work with in two weeks then.
Yeah, I'll have something for you in two weeks, if you if the landing.
What's that date?
Are we talking Monday, are we talking Wednesday, the twenty eighth, we think.
Or eighteen, yeah, two weeks out.
Eighteenth would be two weeks, if you go for Wednesday.
Because if we could do that and make some motions to approve some things, then we can get in front of the council with their next.
Right. Do we have to announce this meeting you're talking about?
Yeah.
Or is it a workshop?
It's a workshop.
But we could come out of workshop, couldn't we, Walker, and then go into the meeting, and do that?
You would just call it a special meeting.
It'd be a special meeting, we still want to notify.
Yeah, but and you need to notify five days, so as long as you notify us five days out, you guys are good.
Could be, I watched that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um I will say on the eighteenth, um I will not be here, um so I can still prepare all the materials for you all to discuss.
I think it's important for you to be here, I heard it's made good days work for you.
Yeah, so I I on the eighteenth, I go on for surgery, so I'll be out for a couple of days.
What what's the Monday, what about the twelfth?
What about that?
Sixteenth is March the thirteenth day, so I guess we're looking at Tuesday the seventeenth would be.
Maybe you don't have any crap or anything you have to worry about for the night before.
No.
After midnight, I can't eat.
Seventeenth is fine with me. Seventeenth is already, that's already here.
What time?
Normal meeting time, six o'clock, is that work for everyone?
Six is good. Seventeenth.
Any more workshop?
No, a special meeting.
Yeah.
That could not work, it's okay for you, much better than a Monday, you know, it's good, yeah.
Yeah.
So January seventeenth, six o'clock.
We'll put that on our schedule, so on that day, um this item is L B two thousand and three and other ordinance changes. Um ladies ordinance changes. Now, the other business.
Can you guys an updated copy of the deal, while we're talking about that, the most recent, all of us, the most recent one?
Sure, I can print those off in the folders, I'll print them up tomorrow, and then uh.
Or just bring it to that.
And then I can bring it to the next meeting, or you can pick them up, that you.
Yeah, this second, if you'll mind, unless.
You can also find it online if you want an electronic copy, it's on the coenforcement page.
Alright.
I know, well, I have technology, but I like to write something, I print my less than nine lines. Are you surprised? Yeah, I'm surprised, I know. I can't help that.
It's okay, Shannon, it's alright, because I do it too, yeah.
You can't keep the nice reading device.
So, what was your Jared?
Second.
Oh, driver. And your rounds?
Yeah.
Thank you.